Good evening. Welcome you to the meeting, the regular session of the meeting of the Pecosin Planning Commission for Monday, October 21st, 2024. Call the meeting to order and we'll first have the invocation and the pledge of allegiance to the flag. Those of you in the audience that wish to participate, we invite you and welcome you. At this time, we will stand for the invocation, which will be the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power and glory forever. Amen. We'll now have the pledge of allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item on our agenda tonight is the approval of the minutes. First, the regular session of February 22nd, 2024. Do I have a motion to accept those minutes for the regular session as written?
To move.
Second? Second. Okay, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hurd.
Aye.
Commissioner Geisinger.
Aye.
Commissioner Grebel. Commissioner Jaeger.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Shaw.
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw.
Stand.
Chairman Schreiber.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay. And the next minutes are for the work session of September 16th, 2024. Do I have a motion to accept those as written?
So moved.
A second.
Second, okay. We'll have the roll call for this, the work session.
Commissioner Hurd.
Aye.
Commissioner Geisinger.
Aye.
Commissioner Saylor.
Stand.
Commissioner Grebel.
Stand.
Commissioner Jaeger.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Shaw.
Aye.
Chairman Schreiber.
Aye.
The minutes passed.
Okay, thank you. And finally, the regular session minutes for September 16th, 2024. Do I have a motion to accept those minutes as written?
Move to accept as written.
Okay, second. Who's second? Do we have a second?
My second.
All right, we'll hear the roll call on those.
Commissioner Hurd.
Aye.
Commissioner Geisinger.
Aye.
Commissioner Saylor.
Stand.
Commissioner Grebel.
Stand.
Commissioner Jaeger.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Shaw.
Aye.
Chairman Schreiber.
Aye.
The minutes passed.
Thank you. We'll move on to the audience for visitors, and this is a time when we welcome anyone that has anything to comment, make any comments to the Planning Commission, other than about the public hearing. At that, we don't take public hearing in the audience for visitors, we have a separate time for that. So if it's a matter other than one of the public hearings, we ask you now to come to the podium and give us your name and address. Anyone has anything they'd like to say, we'd be happy to listen. Yes, sir.
My name's Paul Schubert, I live on Hudgens, 102 Hudgens Road here in Pecosin, and been a resident for about two years now. Saturday was a little bit harrowing, as myself and several neighbors who wanted to enjoy the festival took it on or took a walk down the road and get over there. So my point is, our roads here are very narrow, as I'm sure you're very aware, and I represent a growing voice of neighbors that are very concerned with the lack of sidewalks and the need for them. Safety is always a concern and a great issue. I'm a little disappointed when looking over what's being proposed and missing from the comprehensive plan is a plan for additional sidewalks for our neighbors or our neighborhood. So I'm here to just give a quick voice to the fact that I'm advocating for that. I'm hoping it'll be consideration that can come back into the plan in the future, and we can add some sidewalks to our very narrow and very busy streets. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, everybody. My name is Roxanne Overby. I live at 47 Woodland Road, and I am here also to speak about sidewalks in our community. The current Pecosin Comprehensive Plan that was written in 2018 after taking into consideration from the 2017 citizen survey speaks about the need of sidewalks in our community. I will read a few items from the Comprehensive Plan. The first states, the 2017 Pecosin Citizen Survey contains two questions specifically regarding the construction of sidewalks and bike paths. These questions, proposed statements that respondents were asked to respond on a scale of one to five, from strongly agree to strongly disagree. Both questions received strong positive responses. Sixty-two percent of respondents agreed that construction of sidewalks in Pecosin is a high priority, and fifty-seven percent agrees that construction of bike paths in Pecosin is a high priority. It also states, "Public surveys have documented citizens' desires for sidewalks to be placed along the main routes of travel and recreation throughout the city, in particular to connect Pecosin's four public schools as well as the recreational amenities of Pecosin Municipal Park. A more detailed study would provide a strategy on sidewalk implementation through data collection and analysis and assigning priority regarding demand and current use. It is recommended that sidewalk implementation be a component of any future infrastructure improvement master plan, with the goal of improving pedestrian mobility by connecting citizens' access to public facilities and points of interest throughout the city of Pecosin." It also says, "The city should devise an up-to-date sidewalk implementation plan that identifies roadways and need of sidewalks. Priority for improvements should be assigned according to demand and any significant data derived from the studies performed in the creation of the plan. The implementation of sidewalks should be coordinated with the efforts of a master infrastructure improvements master plan that would coordinate burial of utility lines and piping of ditches where feasible. As most of you know, sidewalks which are separated from the roadway are the preferred accommodation for pedestrians. Providing sidewalks wide and paved shoulders or stabilized shoulders, particularly when providing access to transit in schools, can increase the transportation options for these individuals. Additionally, by moving pedestrians off the travel lanes, motorist operations are improved and road efficiency is increased. Research by the U.S. Department of Transportation indicates that people will walk for recreational purposes if the sidewalk is provided. They also propose in their strategic plan a roadmap of how the government will implement a once-in-a-generation investment to create a transportation system that works for every American. This embodies our needs in our own community to invest in transportation safety to ensure that no matter how you are traveling, whether by vehicle, bike, wheelchair, or on foot, you can be confident that you will arrive at your destination safely. As stated in the 2011 City of Pecosin Sidewalk Safety Assessment and Master Plan, on page one identifies that ribbons of paved roads provide easy access and circulation around town when not interrupted by canals. However, the narrowness of the pavement and open ditch sections restrict the safe mobility of pedestrians, runners, and cyclists alike. The facts are in front of us with the recent pedestrian accident, the shortage in school bus drivers that are being stretched too thin, with students being dropped off at the wrong bus stops and having to walk down busy roads with deep ditches and no sidewalks. Also, the shortage in our police department to enforce speeding and reckless driving. We are not safe, and we need more options to commute. We need a plan. The research has been done and can be seen in previous documents from the citizens of Pecosin and our city officials. The community is speaking out, and action is needed more than ever." I'm almost done, I promise. The citizens of Pecosin that I speak for tonight are requesting our city leaders to pick up where we left off in 2011, reappoint the sidewalk committee if needed, get a plan together. It has been far too long for this matter to be left unaddressed. Let me leave you with a few perspectives. If Pecosin Avenue, Little Florida, Hudgens, or any of our corridors that connect to our schools were built today, they would be built with a sidewalk, just like the With Creek Widening Project. Vida has seen the need for the sidewalks, are building them, and show should we. As we just recently saw on October 8th, a child on a bike was hit by a car in Yorktown Road. This could have been prevented. If we sit back and do nothing today, it is not a matter of if, but when another pedestrian will get hurt or killed on our roads, and we did nothing to prevent it. The current Recommended Constrained Capital Improvements Plan for years 26 through 2030 does not mention any plans for sidewalks. This is concerning. We need a plan. Thank you for your time, we look forward to hearing from you. Thank you.
Any other speakers? Okay, if not, we'll go ahead and close the audience for visitors, and we'll move on to the public hearings for the evening. The first one on the agenda is the Proposed Constrained Capital Improvements Plan, CCIP, for FY 2026 and beyond FY 2030. Okay, and I think we have already had a work session on this. It was on YouTube. I did not attend the work session, but I did look at it, and we have information here, so.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm a salter. Over to you.
The Planning Commission did have an opportunity to receive a work session from staff at its September 16th meeting, and you do have before you the CCIP, and we have it loaded. If any of you had questions, and here tonight is our Finance Director, Tara Woodruff, our Assistant City Manager, Tanya O'Connell, and our City Engineer, Sean Crawford, if you have any questions for them.
Okay, all right, so with that said, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and if anyone would like to address the Planning Commission regarding the, this item on our agenda, we would be glad for you to come right now and do so. If there are no, no one, if no one that wants to come up and speak to the Planning Commission about this, we will go ahead and close the public hearing on this, and we'll go ahead and take this under consideration. Any discussion or questions that you have, members have, that they would like to the city staff that's here? Questions that you have, as of time?
We've had a couple people come up and ask about sidewalks. I wonder what the consideration was taken by the staff and the planners for those, and what, if anything, why those decisions were made?
Good evening, Commissioners. Tanya O'Connell, Assistant City Manager. When it relates to our CCIP, we take in consideration the Department Head's request, as well as request of the City Council. So tonight, you have this Department Head's request and what we can afford on our dollar presented to you currently. Now, if sidewalks are a consideration at the Council's directive, staff will take that into consideration, come up with a plan as far as where do we start, what property do we need to condemn, i.e. by intimate domain, and then what the cost is, and if there's any available rate. So absolutely, at the direction of both the Planning Commission and City Council, we can take that under advisement.
Thank you.
Discussion?
I did want to mention, it's my understanding that the new road with Creek expansion is going to include sidewalks on both sides, is that correct?
That's true.
So that is a positive as far as the sidewalks go, so hopefully that can continue as we move forward.
So, looking at this Comprehensive Plan, which I know we've been looking at for a while and has been in the works, progress tonight, if this is recommended, then what is the process for looking at an issue that has been talked about in the past and kind of fallen off the table, and then, I mean, if it wants to be brought up to City Council, is it waiting until 2030? I mean, what's next? Like, what's next for issues that are not covered within this document at this current time?
The Assistant City Manager.
Not a problem. So each year, we bring this back to your consideration. So I do not want you to look at, one of the things is it's constrained. It gives us an opportunity to understand what our dollars is going forward and what projects we need to address. So next year, if there's a different consideration, we can definitely consider that as well. You'll notice that last year was the first year that through the work of the Finance Director, that we brought you projects that we can actually start affording on our dollar, i.e. through debt issuance. And so with that, we had taken consideration the school board's request, as our own citizens now request for the sidewalk, as well as our department's request. Can I answer that?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
If not, are we prepared to make a motion to accept the Constrained Capital Improvements Plan for 2026 and beyond 2030? I make a motion to approve.
I make it with a friendly amendment that we create an action item to revisit the sidewalk issue when this comes up next year. That's possible?
Can we do that?
We can. The ask is that the document presented is recommended for your approval, but what we can do in our, I say ours being staff, but the Finance Directors, when she takes us to council, she can include that in her memo to cancel that that was conveyed by the central action item.
We need to, you've made a motion to accept it as it is. You're seconding not her motion, but your, your additional.
Correct.
Should we go back? Do we need to go back to Heather?
If the Vice Chair would like to amend her motion to include Mr. Hirsch's item, she may. If not, the motion was moved and seconded unless she withdraws, and Mr. Hirsch then makes a motion that is seconded, then that would be in the proper posture.
I make a motion to amend it to include your suggestion, realizing that, you know, understanding, you know, what council's recommendation would be going forward.
Understood.
And we have a second?
A second.
That, okay, now we can move forward with the calling of the roll.
Commissioner Hurd.
Aye.
Commissioner Geisinger.
Aye.
Commissioner Saylor.
Aye.
Commissioner Grebel.
Aye.
Commissioner Jaeger.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Shaw.
Aye.
Chairman Schreiber.
Aye.
The direction passes.
Thank you. Okay, the second public hearing item is a conditional use permit application by Iowa LLC, doing business as Islander Outdoors, Jose Raffles, applicant, and Samuel Straight, owner, for the operation of a multi-use facility to include an indoor gun range, gunsmithing and firearm manufacturing, retail and, retail and offices, classrooms to be operated at Zero With Creek Road, tax map parcels 27-01-00-0092, Zone Village Commercial. We have a presentation?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission, it's my pleasure to present the CUP application before you tonight. It is a lot of substance to the application, please feel free to stop me along the way, but if it's your pleasure, I'll get through the presentation, take your questions, then we can look at the application together and any supporting documents that has been provided you. As just read, the CUP, the applicant is Iowa LLC, doing business as Islander Outdoors, Mr. Raffles, and Samuel Straight, who is the current property owner. The request is for a multi-use facility that includes an indoor gun range, gunsmithing and firearm manufacturing, retail, and office space and classrooms to be operated at Zero With Creek Road, tax map parcel 27, Tac 01, Tac 0092, Zone Village Commercial. This is the property adjacent to City Hall at the dead end of the Randabat in front of the building. That was formerly considered for a microbrewery in 2015. The code consideration, the uses as described and requested are neither permitted by Right and Village Commercial District, nor are they explicitly prohibited, and therefore require a conditional use permit. Legal notice information, and about the used. This is per the business description in the application. You have the application in front of you, and I've copied over some of the most pertinent information to the slides. I will read through these, I'll try and get through them mindful of your time. Islander Outdoors, and keep in mind, this is the application, this is not staff writing. Islander Outdoors will become one of Pecosin's premier attractions. The recreational facility will be composed of two marksmanship courses that are divided in two bays each. That's the indoor gun range. Additionally, the building will have administrative space, a classroom, a conference room, and workshop space. Those are the uses as described for multiple, I'll say, organizations. While recreational shooting is the primary focus of the business, it will also have a specialty retail section to facilitate sales of outdoor sporting projects, firearms, and accessories. The primary use of the facility will be indoor gun range, outdoor sporting goods. I'll get to one other use in just a bit. The classroom and conference room space will be used to host firearm education and safety courses, as well as available to rent for other purposes. The hose there that should say host is my typo, not the applicant's. The workshop space will be used to facilitate firearm repairs, manufacturing, and gunsmithing activities. The building will also have additional space available for rent to other businesses that comply with the permitted uses listed in the permitted uses section of the VC District. We'll get to that. And the last of that, the shooting arena, will include a law enforcement training bay, which will be designed to facilitate qualification and currency training for public safety personnel with their own private access to the range. Here's the site, right there, you can see City Hall Avenue, Victory and With Creek, so that you can orient yourself, and of course, Alpha Street and the Fountains Building to the east. I will discuss these concept designs and layouts, the, there's been multiple iterations of these provided, two as recent as today, so I will get through these and discuss them as we go. You can see the aerial view of the proposed location. I wouldn't say it's exactly the scale, but of course conceptual, and that was provided and designed by the applicant. I will get to the easement information shown there in just a second, but you can see the building with front City Hall Avenue, and the parking would be in the rear. The conceptual floor plan for the first floor, this, I have a more detailed concept plan to show you in just a minute, but this was provided subsequent to the original application. Second floor detail. This is some information that was provided by the applicant this morning. The project, through my discussions with him today, will be phased. The first phase would include exactly what you see there and what you'll see in just a few minutes. You see the flat range, I'll say, to the north of the depiction, and the law enforcement training bay. You see a conceptual VIP section, and what the applicant is referring to is a quiet range. That is the side adjacent to City Hall, right here outside our, our meeting room, and that would be for air guns and archery. And you can see the different elevations provided. This is a conceptual Phase 1 floor plan. I understand it's not easy to see, but there's a retail component there, the 25-yard ranges on the top of the left image, and then the image on the right is the second story, but I have some clearer images to show you momentarily. This is one of them. You can see the conference room space on the second floor, office space, and then the retail floor below, kind of in the main area of the facility, and then the two 25-yard shooting bays adjacent to each other on the north side of the property, are the property furthest from City Hall. There are easement considerations on this property. There is an existing, what you see in red, a 50-foot easement on the east side of the property that would service the parcels to its south. What you see in green is where right-of-way would be dedicated because the applicant will gain access from City Hall Avenue. And then what you see in yellow on the north and south side are, what I'll say is two, at least a minimum 20-foot easement, depending on how the project is developed, the applicant has offered to it to provide the city with at least one 20-foot easement that would connect City Hall property and city property through his property towards Alpha Street. Obviously, the preference and the plan moving forward would be on the north side, as it's easier, easily accessed, or could be easily accessed from City Hall Avenue, but the concept from the applicant is to have access to the rear of the building from both sides, so there is some, some room to work there. This is an example of a shooting bay provided by the applicant. This is an example of the two-floor shooting bay from what you would see from the main lobby on the first level. This is the shooting lane staging area, so you can see the lobby to the left, the shooting lane's on the right. You noticed in your, in the application that some of the professional office space, I'll say, is to be used for another company, the applicant owns, Hampton Roads Paramotors. So much segue to that as part of the requested conditional uses. If you don't know what a paramotor is, here it is. You may have seen them before locally, or certainly down on the Outer Banks, fairly common. The image on the left, that is the machine itself, I took that from the website there. The image on the right, I took from the applicant's business website, you can see the gantry there at NASA and the paramotor over Back River, I'm not sure if that's the app, it is the applicant, pretty neat photo, but that's what a paramotor is. So let's talk about the Village Commercial District. This comes straight from City Code, and you've read this in my staff memo, but the district itself is intended to encourage the establishment of a village center by permitting a variety of commercial office and residential uses in order to create a center of business and economic activity consistent with the locational advantage and prominence inherent in the Big Woods. Furthermore, it is the intent of this Article 2. One, encourage commercial and office uses that do not attract large volumes of traffic and continuous customer turnover. None of the proposed uses are necessarily high-traffic generators that you would expect with a grocery store, or a convenience store, a fast-food restaurant, but the overall impact is incalculable at this time. Without knowing what uses will be permitted, recommended to be permitted by you, and ultimately permitted by City Council, it's a number we can't give you. But there is language in the VC Code where there's a threshold of 75 trips at peak hours where the Planning Director, our department, can request a traffic impact study, so that is there in the code. The second intent and purpose is to limit and discourage development of strip-type, highway-oriented commercial uses that create traffic hazards and congestion because they require individual curb cuts and generate high traffic. This request does not do that. The third is to... The third is to minimize the visual and functional conflicts between the residential and non-residential uses within and abutting the district. The district, as you know, is basically City Hall Avenue, the immediate adjacent properties, and primarily the Fountains Project accessed by Alpha Street. That is the VC District, and you obviously understand what uses are there now and the intended uses. So as part of conditional uses in the VC language, and included as a condition of approval, is that the ARB, the city's Architectural Review Board, will consider the elevations once provided by the applicant, and we've written in the conditions that the building must be constructed architecturally consistent with surrounded uses being the Office Park at 200 City Hall, the Public Safety Building at 100, and this building here at 500. And we, city staff, at appropriate time, will work in conjunction with the applicant, and we will provide all the material descriptions and information we have so that he may design this building, his building, consistent with surrounding buildings. The fourth is to encourage consolidation of curb cuts, driveways, and parking areas for vehicular access, and promote more efficient and economical parking facilities. This is something we'll review once we get to the development plan. Obviously, we're not there yet. The fifth is to promote development that minimizes land disturbance and incorporates compact, efficient design. The concept plan, it is a large footprint between the building itself and the parking area. It does consume a large portion of that property, and we'll look at that a little more in detail in just a second. The sixth, in the VC District, is to create a pedestrian-friendly environment through incorporation of sidewalks, bikeways, street trees, and street furniture. That's obviously an intent of the district overall, but we'll work with the applicant on connectivity of that parcel to the rest of City Hall Avenue. Hopefully, eventually, we'd like to see a connection to Alpha Street and to With Creek, but, you know, also to the trail and to the legacy development, interconnectivity in the district is very important, and that's something we'll work on the applicant with. These are the permitted uses in the Village Commercial District. I won't walk through these one by one, but you can see that some of these, as described by the applicant, will be included, but that's a given. It wouldn't be before you if all the uses requested were permitted by Wright, but certainly these can be included in the multi-use facility. These are conditional uses in the VC District, again, coming straight from the City Code, and thus I will read. The City Council may approve a use as a conditional use upon consideration of, but not limited to, the following standards and criteria. One, all traffic impacts shall be mitigated at the expense of the developer as deemed necessary by the city manager or his designee. That's been conditioned. The proposed use will not conflict in architectural scale or style to existing development in the district. As just described, it's been conditioned. Minimal visual and functional conflict will be created between the proposed use and nearby uses. It's not anticipated, but we'll ensure that in our development plan review process. Our Development Review Committee will certainly have an opportunity to review this in full from a conceptual plan, if they provide a preliminary plan, and through approval. And D, this is very important. Anticipated noise and congestion created by the use will be comparable to the levels created by other permitted uses in this district. That is something we have conditioned, but I will tell you, it is a working condition, and you'll understand why momentarily. If I need to come back to the permitted uses, I certainly will. These are prohibited uses. The applicant has not requested permission, permitting of a prohibited use, nor will these be allowed in the facility. Direct from the comprehensive plan, a few things to mention. This is in Chapter 7, Infrastructure. You see there what I've boxed. The extension of Alpha Street to City Hall Avenue should also be considered to improve connectivity and promote economic development within the VC zoning district. No formal studies of these sites have been proposed, but any future infrastructure improvement master plan should consider them as potential sites for new access roads or emergency detours. This is very much work, you know, the city we would be doing, but it's important to mention nonetheless, given this property's importance to the connectivity to Alpha Street and With Creek Road and our main business corridor. This is, again, straight from the comprehensive plan, Chapter 8, Land Use, the Village Commercial Section, again, Section 1, Citywide Perspective. Some of this you've heard. I will read it, though. The VC District is encouraged to encourage the establishment of a mixed-use residential and commercial center within the Big Woods area of the Central Planning District by permitting a mix of residential, recreational, commercial, office, and limited business developments. The VC District primarily encompasses areas of city zone for village commercial uses. Architectural control guidelines overlay the district and will guide aesthetics form and design to promote attractive development. We've covered that in the VC District. The ordinance is designed to promote the creation of a more walkable, locally-focused village-type commercial area. Some of the major components are listed there. Again, we've discussed and would be a major part of our development plan review process. I think it's important to discuss the recommended conditions one by one. Some of them are conditions we carry over CUP to CUP, but none less important than the others. Before I do, though, I want to show you a conceptual floor plan. The applicant may correct me if I'm wrong, but these were prepared by his designer or architect. They were provided to staff just this evening, so I apologize for not incorporating it into the PowerPoint. But this, I would assume, is a fairly finished version of the proposed floor plan. Not entirely different from what you saw, but a few important things to understand. This north side being the side furthest from City Hall Avenue, you can see the lobby, the range check-in, and then the flat range, which was the two 25-yard ranges. You see the lounge, and you see the quiet range as described for archery or air rifles. What's interesting was in some of the elevations and designs provided just this morning is the 100-yard bay. That 100-yard bay, I'm sorry, it zoomed down, but that 100-yard bay runs diagonally across the parcel, and I'll go back so you can see it a little clearer from this morning submission, but that is subgrade. That is underground. In that 100-yard range, the bay would be able to facilitate long guns and rifles, whereas if that structure was above grade, meeting the setback requirements would be nearly impossible. So this is proposed as subgrade, so that would almost be a basement-level facility, and then you would have the first floor where the 25-yard ranges and some retail space and the quiet range would be, and then the second story, I'm sorry, not retail space, lobby space, and then the second story would have other uses. You can see a little more. This is the first story with the 25-yard ranges and some retail, some restrooms, a classroom, and then this is the second story, again, office, conference rooms, classroom space for the uses as described by the applicant. You do have a hard copy of this in front of you if you find it easier to view, but is fairly consistent with what was submitted this morning by the applicant, where you can see the diagonal subgrade 300-feet range there, the VIP section, the quiet range, and then how it's oriented. Again, this was submitted just today, and one important thing, very important thing, I discussed this morning with the applicant, was that this is being proposed as a phased project, and this would be Phase 1. What you don't see there is the south or the west wing of the building. I will let the applicant speak more to that. In the original submission, what we had at the bottom, the east wing, was for future use for the same requested uses. Permitted retail uses in the VC, retail uses permitted in the B2 District, which is a condition I'll discuss in just a second, or more shooting lanes. That's not being proposed in the first phase. This is phased construction that we do not currently have a condition to address. With that said, we'll discuss the conditions we have prepared. The first being, the plan for the site shall only be approved once all requirements in the City Code are satisfied. This is a condition you see more or less with every application. Noise associated with the use shall not be detectable at any property line when the building is closed, meaning no doors or windows are open. It wasn't until today that we were provided with some noise tests that a company conducted in different parts of the country, who the applicant is consulting to help engineer and design his building. You have that in a separate handout. Noise, obviously, being very important as, you know, a purpose and an intent of the district, is to mitigate noise and congestion. Mr. Horton and I took some noise level readings around the building just today, really for comparison purposes, to some of the noises provided in that handout. We're not familiar with if those are large commercial zones or exactly where they are, but decibel ranges for around this building in the district now was anywhere from about 45 to 55 decibels. Typical conversation you could imagine is about 30. So 45, 55 decibels is the noise you hear standing out front on the sidewalk or in the rear of the building. That's all noise created. The wind blowing, the trees moving, construction equipment, folks parking cars, traffic going by. It's ambient noise. It's noise that existed from where the measurement is taken. The third condition, we discussed just briefly in the presentation, was that all traffic impacts shall be mitigated at the expense of the developers deemed necessary by the city manager or his or her designee. The fourth is that this CUP allows for all uses specifically permitted or those in Section 11-2 of the City Code permitted uses of the Village Commercial District. It's very much implied, but we wanted to be explicitly clear that any use otherwise permitted in the district would be allowed to rent, lease, or purchase space in the facility. The fifth condition is that the uses per the application and permitted as part of the CUP are as follows. Retail sales as permitted in Section 10-2 of the City Code, permitted in conditional uses in the general business district, B2. The condition allows for the sale of outdoor sporting goods, firearms, and accessories. So all the retail uses that you would find permitted in the B2 District, With Creek Road, retail, just the retail sales, those would also be permitted in this facility. The second is it permits the gunsmithing and firearm manufacturing. The third, it allows for professional office space for Hampton Roads Paramotors. This was a requested use. When we think of professional office space typically defined, described as office space for doctors, lawyers, engineers, this would allow for the office space for his business, for his professional operation of the business. The fourth would allow for classroom and/or conference room space to be used for firearm education, firearm safety courses, as well as aviation safety courses associated with Hampton Roads Paramotors. Six, signage is to be permitted in accordance with Pen XD Signs of the City Code. Seven, all requirements as found as Chapter 22 Business, Article 3 Gunnery Ranges, shooting areas of the City Code must be satisfied. You have a copy of that. It's a part of the City Codes that speaks to just that, gunnery ranges, and it speaks to the permitting process and some requirements of the police chief. They would have to comply. It's implied, but we wanted to make it explicitly clear. The eighth condition. Coinciding with submission of a development plan, the applicant must submit architectural elevations of the proposed building as well as signage, material description, paint colors, et cetera, to be considered by the city's Architectural Review Board. The facility shall be designed and constructed in a manner that is consistent with existing buildings on City Hall Avenue to include the offices located at 200 City Avenue, the Pecoson Public Safety Building, and Pecoson City Hall. We've discussed this at length, but probably the most important point to be made here is that we will work in conjunction with the applicant on ensuring that what they take to the ARB is consistent, and we'll help, we'll work with their architects and designers so that they can satisfy that requirement. The ninth condition reads that prior to any approval of development plans, the developer must agree to dedicate a 50-foot right-of-way acceptable to the city and comparable with the VDOTs roadway standards to allow for future connection to Alpha Street Extended and/or Beta Street on the east side of the lot. There's an existing 50-foot easement that's there for the properties on the south, and we, in working with the applicant, he will convey access rights to that 50 feet to the city as well. And continuing there, the developer must also agree to dedicate a minimum 20-foot easement to the city on either or both the north or south side or sides of the lot to further provide connection to Alpha Street Extended and/or Beta Street. Those were the two yellow conceptual easements I showed you in the presentation. Tenth, the use must comply with all local, state, and federal permits, licenses, and regulations. If at any time the use is operating in violation of any of the regulations set forth by the aforementioned agency, the conditions listed herein, the City Council may revoke the permit. That's the authority for council to revoke the permit at such time any of the uses are operating without the proper permitting and licenses, whether it be from the city, the state, or the federal government. The eleventh condition. If a development plan is not officially submitted to the city for review prior to January 1, 2026, this permit, the CUP, shall become null and void. If a certificate of occupancy for the facility is not issued prior to July 1, 2028, this permit shall become null and void. This is what I'll say is a performance condition. We've worked with the applicant on these dates and the timeline, but this is a condition so that we know, and the applicant has offered in good faith, that City Council approval, it won't sit in waiting. He's going to move on this thing and move on this thing by these dates, and if he doesn't, the permit expires. If he doesn't think he can achieve the dates, he can request amendment to the CUP at any time, for any reason, and if he's getting close, that's what we would encourage him to do, request an extension and another application to us, and we would amend the date. The twelfth condition. If at any time the specified permitted use on the property is discontinued for a period of two or more years, this permit shall become null and void. That's a That's what I say is a carryover condition. You see that with every CUP you consider. This is if he opens and starts operating, any of the uses permitted by the CUP, and then shuts down, from the day he shuts down, he has basically the right to sell the business interest or the facility to someone else. And if it's within two years, they could continue operation. Outside of the two years, they could not. And the last condition is that city council reserves the right to review and amend the conditions of the permit as they see fit. Again, a carryover condition that you see with most applications and CUPs that come before you. I cannot speak necessarily to the federal regulations of some of the requested uses. My knowledge of those layman at best. I will let the applicant discuss. If you have questions pertaining to those, very knowledgeable, extremely knowledgeable on the subject, he's owned a firearm sales company in the city for a number of years. I will say, though, that it's the opinion of staff that some of these are still working conditions. The noise condition being one of those. The phasing information provided today is important. When we talk about dates required for development plans and COs, well, if it's going to be broken down into or three phases, maybe there's benchmarks for each phase. Because conceptually, if this was permitted just for Phase One, there would be no requirement to continue with the other wing of the building. So those are things to be considered. A lot of the information, the business description, the application itself, was provided by the application deadline. We have worked for months with the applicant. It's been a pleasure working with him to craft these conditions that are amenable to him, acceptable as far as staff is concerned. However, today, some critical information was received that I think may change some of your views of the current conditions and may warrant a little more work by staff with the applicant. It's my opinion, it's in the best interest of the applicant, our citizens, and the staff and adjacent property owners, if we have a little more time to work on this, that being tonight with you and after this meeting, given the information provided this morning and this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions you have this evening or address any concerns you have. The applicant is here. I see some adjacent property owners here. But I would encourage you, if you feel somewhat inclined, to continue the public hearing till December 2nd, so that we can give the public an opportunity to see the materials provided today. The public hasn't had that opportunity because of the late submission. Rather than a motion to deny, or if that's the desire of the commission, certainly, that's your purview. But in all fairness to the applicant, staff, and our citizens, I think it'd be germane to postpone consideration and continue the public hearing till December 2nd.
Okay. Oh, with that said, does anybody have any questions that they want to ask Thomas?
I have a question aimed at probably both staff and the applicant. I was wondering about security considerations of stored firearms, given that it's going to be a retail range, a retail sales facility. And I didn't seem to find any provisions or recommendations related to that. Just wondering if that was intentional or if that was in a mission or...
It was not intentional or in a mission, but all of those requirements, much more federal and state regulated than city. I would definitely defer to the applicant on that.
Well, just have a seat, because we haven't opened the public hearing yet, and we will do that, and we'll get you up here. This is just to ask Thomas, and Thomas has answered probably your question. Anyone else want to ask Thomas something before we open the public hearing?
Yeah, Thomas, looking, I know there've been a couple of different submissions with the site plan and changes, but from looking at, it doesn't quite seem to be to scale, which is understandable. But what's going to be the distance? We look at the proximity to City Hall and the library. What's the proximity of the end of that building, that end of their parking lot, their sidewalk, to where we are now entrance and exit into a highly-traffic family city?
That's a good question, and it's not one I can give you an exact answer to without submission of a fully-prepared development plan, a two-scale plan, that I could tell you down to the inch how far it's from certain places on the building. Doing some work just on GIS, I would, I think I estimated that from the nearest edge of City Hall to either the subgrade long gun range from where the shooting, from the end of the range, from where shots would be fired, maybe about 200, 220 feet. I believe the Public Safety Building, the nearest, from the nearest side of the Public Safety Building to where approximately the edge of the building, this facility would be about 140 feet. Again, very approximate. Obviously, things can change. An absent of a fully-prepared stamped or sealed development plan, we won't be able to give you those numbers exactly. But that's approximate. Again, might be something the applicant can address.
And then my other question is, from looking at the plan, the intent is to have foot traffic in and out of both sides, both the parking lot side and both the side facing City Hall.
Correct.
So we have people walking firearms in and out of two doorways on two separate sides, correct?
It could be accessed from the front, but requirements of the VC district is that parking is in the rear or sides of buildings. So there won't be parking space out front. Really, off-street, on-street parking is not permitted in the VC district. So people won't be able to necessarily park their cars on City Hall Avenue for the purpose of entering the building. If it's someone driving to the facility, then they would pull in from City Hall and drive around the back of the facility and park in the parking area. That is not at all to say that someone couldn't access the building from the front with a gun or bow or air rifle.
So it mean really parking would be anywhere on, there are parking spots on the street leading to City Hall and the parking lot behind City Hall, patrons could park there, walk around the City Hall?
It would be accessible.
Okay. And then my other question was, obviously, the underground component was new as of when we just saw this drawing and... So I just, there's not much underground unless you can tell me I'm wrong, but how much...
You're not wrong.
Underground building do we have with how saturated we are?
I can tell you the details of that are not some that I'm specifically experienced, I won't say experienced, expert of. Our building official could definitely expand on it. But just high level, you know, if there were no mechanical equipment, or it was engineered in a way that would permit the subgrade construction, then we would permit it. But if requirements of the building code and floodplain management weren't met, then we wouldn't permit the construction.
Thomas, I would just like to ask on this drawing that I'm looking at in relationship to the lot, so the intent is to pretty much cover the lot. Is that correct?
I would say that the building and what parking area would be required does consume a large portion of the lot. With that said, the parking requirement and space consumed would be less if the first phase was built and the subsequent phase not built. But I think if built out, it would cover a large portion of the lot.
Do we know the dimensions of this building in relationship to the lot?
I don't.
How much is set, what are the setbacks all the way around?
I can, I have that for you here. The side yard requirements are 10 feet. This wouldn't necessarily have an access driveway. If it did, it would be 30 feet. The driveway, that's obviously nothing is existing. Each rear yard shall be a minimum of 15 feet. So there are some obvious setback requirements, and there is a setback from City Hall Avenue, I believe 40 or 50 feet. But those, you know, would have to be observed and adhered to in the development plan process. Otherwise, the applicant would have to request variances to those. As far as I can tell, I don't think the applicant will have an issue meeting the setback requirements.
And what about the height of the building? Do we know any dimensions or any...
We do. Maximum building height in the VC district is three and a half stories or 40 feet in height.
Forty feet?
Forty feet.
And what is the intent of this one?
I'll let the applicant address it. But right now, at present, it is only two stories above grade, obviously, how tall the stories are. But I'll let the applicant address his concept design.
I think moving forward with any application in the city, that the commission, as well as the council, be provided a concise document that shows the length and the height of a building in relationship to its lot, as well as what the surrounding buildings look like. I'd just like to put that out there.
Thank you.
All right. If we have no other questions, Thomas, let's go ahead, and we will open the public hearing on this matter. If anyone wishes to address Planning Commission, please come forward and give your name and address. Come right up.
Hi, good evening. My name's Joe Raffles. I'm the head of the project. Again, I'd like to thank you, thank the council or the board for hearing our project. Do you have any questions for me specific that wasn't already covered on the presentation? I know there's some information that's missing there. A lot of this information that I provided is still a concept. When you're working with these shooting ranges, when you're designing it, it can get pretty expensive pretty quick. So the goal of our application is to gauge the, how we are doing on the approval. And, you know, once we see that, hey, this gets to city council, we're going to get correct elevations and precise, I guess, facets of the building as we work with the city to design it. So, so far, can you repeat some of the questions that you had that Mr. Granella wasn't able to maybe address?
I would like to know the height. I don't think we...
So right now, so the first story, it's 12-foot ceilings, and the second story is just a mesene. So we're looking at about maybe 35 feet. It'll be well below the maximum elevation of what's established in the Village Commercial District.
Have you ever built these ranges in the past? Or is this your first?
No, ma'am. This is my first.
It is your first.
Yeah. Some little bit about me, my background, I started off in law enforcement, the Coast Guard. From there, I went out to the Army. Currently, I'm an airline pilot with American Airlines. But I've been in the firearms industry here in Pecoson for the last 11 years running a gun shop. And I've been in it my whole life, just growing up around firearms hunting and outdoor sports. It's my first project, building this. I'm not an expert. I don't know everything. But I've been in the military a lot, and I have the leadership it takes to get it off the ground. The key is surround yourself with the correct people to get the project moving in the right direction.
On the safety issues that were addressed, I think Thomas said that some of the things would be regulated by other people or other agencies. But in storing properly guns and things of that nature, I would think, I mean, you're probably much more knowledgeable than I am on that. I have no idea. I noticed you had a vault in your drawing, which I'm assuming you're keeping some things in there that would probably be, I don't know, I have no experience with what you're doing. So it's, it's, safety issues are certainly parallel. Yeah. You might want to address some of those.
So ATF is really strict as far as firearm storage requirements. All firearms, they have to be locked in a vault. Some, wherever you go to a gun range, you'll see a display case out there. Some of those display cases are designed to be hardened. So that way, you're not taking off, taking the guns off the walls and putting them away every morning. They're actually hardened display cases. And as well, you also have building requirements by ATF that make it a hardened building. So some firearms will be stored in the vault, and some firearms will be stored on the display cases, which are hardened for the purpose.
And as far as noises, I'm sure that, and in your presentation, in which you presented to us, the buildings themselves are very soundproof, I would think.
Yes. So there's two different kinds of shooting ranges. There's a shooting range that has been retrofitted for an existing building, and then there's a purpose-built, engineered shooting range. And that's what we're trying to build here. Of course, the purpose-built, engineered range is going to be a lot more quiet than if you take the farm fresh and put a shooting box inside of it. So our goal is to make this building essentially quiet where you can't hear it outside. That's the reason why the first level is underground, and the second level, you're actually going to have filling on the side, on the walls, in addition to how it was designed. I'm not sure if you can, you should be able to see it on your, on the floor plan. The actual range is inside the building, you have another room around it. That's designed to be an air gap to allow less noise to even escape the outside. So we anticipate that you will not be able to hear any gunshots outside of the building. I would not want to hear any gunshots outside of the building either, so I'm pretty sure no one would.
What about this 100-yard, excuse me, 100-yard range underground? Is that what I'm hearing here?
Yes. So underground's kind of hard to say in Pecoson, you kind of think of taking the trees out and digging. We can't really do that around here, of course.
I was going to say, I don't know how you would get a basement there.
Yes. We're going to have to bring fill material in and fill around it and make it level so it's underground. So it would have to be filled in. There would be a portion that would be underground, but once it's designed and engineered correctly, the building won't flood, because you have dirt around it, around the foundation. We're not going to make a mound of dirt and put it on top of it. That's just, I don't think that would look right around here. But essentially, we would have to bring in fill material to make it flat, if that makes sense.
I think some of the issue is trying to, us kind of put our hands around, you know, the phased plan, and we kind of get that. But starting off with, you know, just off the ground, you're going to have to build above ground, obviously.
Whether that one, what it looks like as far as moving up from there for your first floor, you know, how that...
Trying to get a concept of what that's going to look like. Second floor on top of that, just, it's going to be a mezzanine-based building. You're talking about turning that into a second floor.
It's just retail, yeah, retail, and you have a classroom, gunsmithing shop, workshop, facilities, and bathrooms, stairs, elevators.
One more question about noise. I'd be amazed if you were able to get, you know, zero noise outside the building. Is that what you were saying, or...
I think zero noise is a misnomer. There's no such thing as zero noise, and it was actually one of the concerns I brought up as part of the CUP, and I think it could be addressed a little better. There has to be some kind of measurement, and that's why I sought out measurements that were made at all the ranges and provided them to the city so they can have an idea of how loud a shooting range is actually on the outsides. All of these shooting ranges are designed with different specs of the one that we're going to design. And as you can tell from the measurements, you can barely hear them on the outside. That's your goal.
Any kind of estimate or anything as far as like what kind of traffic you're looking at, as far as people in and out, or...
So most of the traffic will be during off-peak hours, because during the week, a lot of people are working, so you can't really go to the range. Once people get off work, they will come over and visit the range in the evenings. During the day, the traffic that we foresee will probably be small number of just civilian traffic and mostly law enforcement officers coming over and using our facilities.
What are your proposed hours?
So what we would like to be able to do is, at least to the law enforcement community, give them 24/7 access to the law enforcement training bay. The way this is designed, they would be able to just walk over from the Public Safety Building, badge in, and they could go down the stairs and train as they need. That's our purpose. For the general public, you know, we think that 10:00 PM is a reasonable time to shut it down.
What about opening?
Probably 8:00 or 9:00 in the morning. Depends, I'm not sure what the city has as far as opening hours, but I don't think a lot of people like to wake up early to go to the range.
Well, you know, sometimes they do. And I've, they do go later, because at Lafayette, I know people, and I'm a member there, so...
And we have...
I know they do go early, some of them, you know. Some of them go early.
The way we have set up our VIP section is that if allowed by the city, VIP members would be able to also card in and have access to the VIP range, which is located downstairs. If you can zoom into it. So you have the VIP range, you'll see right next to the VIP lounge, you have a smaller range that is for the VIP members, so they can come in, batch in. You'll have storage lockers down there, and they can leave their stuff at the lounge.
So your intent is to have 24/7 access, and I'm assuming you're looking to get contracts in business with law enforcement to pay to come in and use the center, as well as your VIP access, so there could potentially be business conducted 24 hours a day?
Potentially, they could be an option for 24/7 access, but if you have a VIP range, that is still to be discussed because we will have to see how we can set up the SOP, the procedure for people to access the range after hours. There would have to be, there will be security on-site, cameras, and of course, people that are having access are going to be vetted to be able to access the range.
The VIP lounge is...